It's 5:15, we'll go ahead and call to order. We will stand and do the pledge. We'll do rolls call first. All right, roll call. Jessica Crosby?
Here.
Reminder, you have to turn the buttons on and everyone get their mics on, otherwise we won't be heard.
Here.
Tony Corpey?
Here.
Emily McGonigal, here. Roxanne Skosjejdejich. Bruce Raveling?
Here.
Tina Sather?
Here.
Joanne Smith? E. Kevin?
Present.
And Mitch Erickson?
Here.
Let's stand for the pledge of allegiance. Motion to approve the agenda?
I will make that motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
And just so the board is aware, and I'll talk about it when we get there, the only thing that was added is there's one more action item. It's on a co-op, possible co-op agreement, and so we'll talk about that when we get there. Other than that, nothing was changed that I'm aware of, so suggest approval.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 All opposed? Motion carried. Is there any open form requests? All right.
Emma?
And we'll move on to the Elks Student of the Month.
Emma Saxton is one of the Elks Lodge 1599 Students of the Month for January. Emma is the daughter of Christina and Ted Saxton. Emma has prepared herself well by taking numerous college and the school courses. I might say just about every one. Two years of English, two years of college and the school social studies, two years of math, and then let's not forget physics band, journalism, to round off what I'm going to say is a great education, or at least a base of your education. Emma has participated in PEP and Jazz Band, Knowledge Bowl, speech, student council, Minnesota Honor Society, Kuchin hearing prevention and education, and active in the journalism class and all that they produce and publish. Emma is active outside of school by hiking, biking, canoeing, camping and kayaking. When at home, she likes to cook, bake, practice her clarinet, and read. Emma recently produced and presented the documentary, "There Must Be Something in the Water: A History of Controversy in the Falls with Fellow Student Ellen Mendels," in partnership with the Smithsonian and the Kuchin County Historical Society. Ms. Rudolph writes, "Emma is a natural leader. She is quirky in the best possible way, and her passion and creativity is unmatched. She is extremely dedicated in her various roles at Falls High School. She has an incredible work ethic and is a joy to have in class and in our school." True to her nature, Emma has some short and long-term goals. She plans to be a counselor at Camp O'Gitchi Da Quay, the girls camp out on Rainy, which is a wilderness camp, a wilderness camp for girls on Rainy, and then attend a four-year university to pursue a major in communication and a minor in mathematics. Emma Saxton, Elks Student of the Month for January. Just for the board, if you give me one second, I'm going to read two more. And we'll go down and take a picture. I'm going to, yeah, if you sit just one second. Nora Solvin is the other. She's going to try making it next month, so I'm not going to read hers. But I am going to pull just because we're getting too many. I still got three of them sitting here. So my plan is to publicly read them, and then we will get a person or get them in for a picture in the next day or so. So I'm going to take the two from December. So December Elks Student of the Month, one of them is Gracie Visnet. Gracie Visnet is one of the Elks Lodge 1599 Students of the Month for December. Gracie is the daughter of Julie Julian and James Visnet. She has participated in volleyball, basketball, and track and field throughout her high school career. Gracie earned the right to be a member of the Minnesota National Honor Society and currently is the treasurer on the board for this school year. She has taken two years of college and the school English and social studies, along with a college math course, chemistry, physics, Spanish one and two, and the list goes on. Gracie loves to do anything outside. Her favorite things to do are hunt, fish, snowmill, downhill ski, and spend a lot of time on the lake. Mr. Sandberg said Gracie is taking the concurrent enrollment class American Government. She has excelled in all aspects of this difficult class. She is always prepared with her work done and with high quality. She also possesses many fine qualities that make her an outstanding student. She is energetic, always smiling, always has a great attitude, cares about her fellow classmates, and has a drive and dedication that will take her far in life no matter what she does. She has been a joy to have in class. Ms. Hammer said Gracie is a leader in her classroom. She is always on task, always positive, and always willing to work with her peers. She is willing to do whatever is asked of her and works hard to make sure it is done to the highest standards, all with a smile on her face. Gracie is planning to attend NDSU for nursing. After getting her bachelor's in nursing, she hopes to further her education in the medical field. Gracie Visnet, one of the Elks Students of the Month for December. Julius Meish is one of the Elks Lodge 1599 Students of the Month also for December. Julius is the son of Joel and Angel Edens. Julius has participated in several of the college and the school classes. And these could almost be repetitive, which is not a bad thing. Several of the college and the school classes, a junior and senior earning credit in math and English. He has also challenged himself with courses like physics, Spanish two. Julius has participated in hockey and is currently on the varsity team. He also is a varsity baseball player in which he is the captain this upcoming season. Julius earned the honor of being inducted into the Minnesota Honor Society and is an active member. Outside of school, Julius likes to be with family, his girlfriend Lola, and friends. He likes to be on the lake fishing and out in the woods hunting. Julius enjoys traveling and going on vacation. Mr. Sandberg said Julius is an outstanding senior. He comes to class every day with a smile and is ready to work. He is a true role model for other students, and he has drive, dedication, a caring attitude, honesty, humor, and tries his best every day. He's been a joy to have in class every day. Ms. Line said, "I've known Julius for many years. He has always been a team leader and contributes to every environment he is in. Julius has an amazing ability to believe that he can acquire new skills and improve through practice. I assume this is shaped by his years of baseball and hockey, where he is also a shining leader. He puts forth tremendous effort, and it has been a joy to watch him make both academic and personal progress. He is trustworthy, reliable, good-humored, and such a good friend to his peers. I am confident that he will continue this path in the future and demonstrate the same diligence, perseverance, and optimism as he has shown through his high school. Julius plans to attend a university but is undecided at this point on where he plans to get a degree in sports management. Julius Meish, Elks Student of the Month for December."
We'll move on to the consent agenda. Is someone willing to make a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll make that motion.
Second?
I'll second.
The only comments, and I'm just throwing a few things out. There's the coaches, the coach hires, mainly for spring. I just answered a few questions that I know. As far as the policies, just to review, majority are, well, they're all based on MSBA. We don't think have any first readings, but again, they're mainly updates as you read through them of what MSB is recommending. And typically, we'll try and have five, six. Otherwise, we end up having forty of them, you know, in one go, and it's just too much. So by all means, ask if you have any questions, but don't feel like you have to have them memorized or anything like that. Usually, once a year, like our credit one, you know, there's a few that have more modifications specific to us, but most of them are legal, I'm going to say legal jargon that is updated. So other than that, there's a stop-arm grant. Mr. Holt, I think it's our third time applying, finally got selected, so that would be stop, or it's going to be stop-arm cameras, which is a great added, I'm not going to say it doesn't do anything safety-wise, but hopefully it will deter people and possibly catch some people that run stop-arms more. The early retirement on them for Mr. Casareto, that is in contract. So for the most part, it's a rubber stamp that allows us to plan.
Any questions? I don't have any questions. I just want to make sure that we put an S on the last of Casey Myers, number 10.
So just because I'm new, do we have a conversation on any? You can typically, and just to review, and I think they probably, and I don't know because I didn't sit through, typically in one of the Phase One or Two, the consent agenda has to pass unanimously. So, you know, we can have a conversation, but if there's ever anything that someone has, hey, this, I might have me in favor of this, we would want to pull that out, you know, ahead of time, because if anyone votes against us, everything fails. And so typically, like if there was something, you know, for instance, and I'm just going to use, you know, say there was a contract we were approving, whether it's teachers, that would go under action, because, you know, maybe something is against, you know, something we have in there or whatever. But most of this stuff, I don't know if rubber stamp is the right word, but that's what a consent agenda is supposed to be. You know, it's kind of like paying bills. You can have questions, but the reality is if we've bought something, we're probably, you know, to pay for it, and that's why the bills for the minutes, you can have a correction or something like that, but how would we not approve the minutes from last? You know, so if there's questions on something, yeah, fire away, but like I say, if there's ever, you're going through here, and again, we'll try not to put stuff that we, you know, for instance, SRO, I didn't throw that in there because we most likely aren't going to do anything, you know, but that would be an example. We wouldn't want that in consent, because if we voted down, our bills are going to get paid.
Right.
And so we have a problem. So I don't know, fire away if you have questions, you know.
Well, I was just wondering about the details around the contract with S and S for payroll services.
Okay, the contract is attached if you want to look at it. The reason we put that in consent is a month ago, at whatever special meeting we had, we took action to either A, offer it to the first person, second person, or outsource, at least for time B. And we had the contract at that point, you know, that was there, it was. So really, we moved forward. So now it's really, you know, a formality to approve. Now, again, we're not locked in forever, you know, but it's not meant to be a month to get out, you know, because both sides are investing now to get people on board and trained and so on. So that's why it's going to consent. If it would have been part of a normal meeting, that would have went to, you know, action, you know, because who knows if we would have been better not. But right now, we voted whatever, December 28th or whenever that meeting was.
Yeah, before we were official.
Well, I mean, that group, but don't take it the wrong way. I mean, you're locked into a lot of things that your prior board did, you know, and it's just like, whenever one of us leave, we're going to lock a board into, you know, like the contract. So do you have questions on that contract? I mean, I can answer. I don't have everything memorized.
I guess it doesn't really matter if the board already voted to approve it.
The reality is just like you say, it's a formal, actually like you say, it was part of, but we didn't call it out, so I'm just asking for formal approval just to increase the auditor. But the reality is, the board said to vote for it, and so Thursday, we have them here. We've started their setup. They have access to, you know, our stuff and we're moving. Yeah, whether it's a year, two years, whatever, there's no, and they actually had a three-year contract. If you read it, it's a three-year contract, and they wanted 20% if we were to get out. I got that taken out, because I said, well, then the same goes if you were to back. I want 20%, and well, let's take that out. So for the most part, it's not going contract for up to three years, but someone wants out with sixty days notice. But that being said, we're investing a lot of time and effort right now, you know, to get the person up to speed. So they do it in three months from now, so see.
So again, just to end me up, where does the money come from to pay the?
That comes out of our general fund, just like what the money we would use to pay the person in the business office is coming out of that pot.
Okay. I'll make sure.
No, and by all means, throw questions, but like you say, if there's anything consenting, that goes for all of us, just keep in mind. Because again, I would try not to do it, but occasionally, we don't think something is as controversial as it may be. If it is, any person, you don't need a first, I would just like to pull, and just pick a number seven out and put it under action.
So how I sent you all them questions ahead of time, if I, like, I was good after you answered them, but had I not agreed with something, then I could have asked to put it on action?
Correct, or if it's something that, like you say, could be a game changer. I mean, you can give clarification, anyone can send emails. Again, most of the stuff, and just so the rest of the board knows, that Tina sent, and Rox was copied, but also Jessica. For the most part, it was questions like, you know, why are these policies read twice? I didn't copy, you know, typically if it was something like informative, I would have taken, well, no, and I'm just being honest so everyone knows, I would have taken your question, not said Tina asked it. Can you put it out to the whole board? You know, if it was something like under our action that you were asking, just because that way, usually if one person has a question, another gets it.
Yes, because I'm like, do I ask you?
But a lot of the stuff, like you say, a lot of the stuff was more, I guess nuances, so I didn't send each piece out to the board, so to speak, or to the rest of the board. But no, fire away, because there's going to be some new stuff. There was questions on, you know, like the safe learning plan, one about how much S or money did we have, and stuff we went through. So I sent them the work session document, we didn't go through it, but from last year. So that's the type of, excellent questions, and again, I don't have to disapply any of them. But if there are things, again, you can still ask questions at any time at the table, you know, but if there is something that I'm just going to say, hey, I might not have moved that safe learning plan, then, yeah, if you want to say, hey, I'd just like to, thirty-one or whatever the number is, put that under action. And that's fine. No one has the right to say like that.
So then with regards to the hires and, yeah, all the hires that there are on here, is it just basically a rubber stamp based on the interview that they already went through?
For the most part, again, not to say the board couldn't challenge something. It's just obviously a dicey situation, you know, that if you had an interview committee, again, most of the time not be involved. You know, and all of a sudden, someone says, I disagree, there's not much we can talk about. You know, it's just, it's a tough part, and that happened years ago, I'm just going to be honest. And you then had a tough time having staff want to be on a hiring committee. But if there's something, if someone has a major concern, maybe that would be something, hey, heads up ahead of time, you know, and we look into this, because otherwise, I mean, I'm not going to say you're the only ones that can hire and fire. You know, to say you have to rubber stamp, but can't tell you that. But typically, that's why there are consent, is the hiring committees went through the process, and, you know, we don't have anything, you know, background checks either been done or it's contingent on that passing. We haven't found anything, you know, reference checks, we've done some. Sometimes we've done, you know, locally, because sometimes no people, try getting, most time, if I, you know, do a reference check on someone from Iowa, you know what I'm saying? Who has, who are your reference checks? Maybe you're going to must involve someone, but locally, you're illegal, sometimes we call them. So, you know, that answers.
It does.
Good question. Good question. So we have a motion, a second?
So all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right. Moving to the resolution of acceptance of gifts and donations, do we have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
A second.
And these are ones that I have to read.
I can quote these.
Yes. So that's the fun part. Resolution for acceptance of gifts and donations. Whereas the school board policy 706 establishes the guidelines for the acceptance of gifts or donations to the district. Whereas International Falls Public District Board encourages the support of the district's educational programs through gifts and donations that meet the goals and the, that meet the goals and objectives of the school district. Whereas Minnesota State statute 465.03 states the school board may accept gifts, grants, or devices of real or personal property only by the adoption of a resolution approved by two-thirds of its members. Therefore, be resolved, the school board of International Falls Public School, ISD 361, accepts with the appreciation of the following gifts, donations, grants received by the school district. The district donations received are as follows. PCA donation, Christmas movie at the theater for Falls Elementary for the amount of $2,350. Broncos volleyball boosters, fan bus to the playoffs for the donation of $1,010. Rendier Recreation Club prom donation for the amount of $250. Susan and Stuart Norquist Bronco Hall of Fame and the donation of $1,000. Coca-Cola Bronco Hall of Fame and the donation of $250. And those approved. Did anybody else?
You and me here will discuss.
Aye.
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 And you guys?
That's accepted.
And prior to doing the next resolution, just so everyone's aware, it comes a time during the year that we do a resolution directing administration to possibly bring forth cuts. If we don't do that, the board cannot do the reductions. And so every year, even if we were adding, this comes forth just in case something comes up among the two down the road. So I'm just giving it forewarned that that's what this is. So it doesn't mean anything's happened or not, so to speak. It just gives the ability if you need to do some reductions down the road.
So I'm seeking a motion for the resolution directing the district administration to make recommendations for reductions in programs and positions and reasons therefore. Is there a motion?
All motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
I'll read the resolution. Emily McGonigal is introducing the following resolution and views towards adoption. The resolution directing the administration to make recommendations for reductions in programming and positions and reasons therefore. Whereas the financial conditions of the school district may dictate that the school board reduces expenditures, and whereas there may be decline in student enrollment projections, and whereas there may be reduction in expenditures and decrease in student enrollment projections that may include discontinuing positions and discontinuing of curtailment of programs. And whereas a term of determination must be made as to which teacher's contracts must be terminated and not renewed, and which teachers may be placed on under a stipule of absence without pay or fringe benefits in affecting discontinued positions. Be resolved by the school board of the Minnesota School District 361 as follows. The school board hereby directs the superintendent schools administration to consider discontinuing of programs or positions to effectuate the economics of the school district and reduce expenditures, make recommendations to the school board for discontinuance of programs, curtailment of programs, discontinuance of positions, or curtailment of positions as needed. The motion for adopting the ther foreground resolution is due in a second by?
For a second.
And all in favor?
Aye.
Any votes? That shall pass?
If we can, I'm going to, on the next side, before we possibly do a motion or not, I want to just have some discussion and just let everyone know where we're at. I'm going to say the three groups, not to say there couldn't be more groups, have approached us about possible reviews for the summer. Okay, and I'm going to go back.
We're on, I was going to say, we jumped, we added the one.
Oh, sorry.
The co-op. Sorry.
Sorry.
The co-op first.
Okay. Go back.
I will go back.
I didn't correct anything.
So looking for a motion, we're approving the application for cooperative sponsorship with Cornerstone Christian School, Emo School, Ontario Girls' Track and Field, Boys' Track and Field, and Softball. So this is the MSHLS cooperative agreement. Is there a motion?
Can I read the question before you make a motion? Or do you have to?
Technically, we should take a motion a second. If we vote it down, there's nothing wrong with that. And so the other one, I just don't know if there's good in the motion, you know, technically. So we can do discussions, so we should just get a motion a second. Does it mean you're in favor or not?
I'll make that motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Discussionary questions?
Just to give a little history, I want to say probably a month and a half ago, we were asked to come, I was asked along with another coach, and it doesn't really matter at this point, to come. It's the school in Emo, which used to be a part of the Rainy River District, the Southern Schools. They went to be a private school at this point, and they were interested in possibly co-opping for seeing what that could or couldn't do. So we went and had a conversation that technically, anything is possible. To be honest, they only have eighteen high school kids. I mean, they're small. Now, they have, don't quote me, I'm a sixty or sixty-five elementary, you know, so the numbers below, they hope to grow, and obviously, they think if they can provide some opportunity for kids, that that may help, you know, keep some of the older kids. So we had a conversation, left the door open, then, you know, if you're interested in something, let us know, and we'll see where it goes. Because again, being that, yeah, we're interested in speech, or we're interested in football, or whatever, other than we're interested in a conversation. So we have, on Thursday or Friday, Thursday, when we were down actually sitting at the table eating, I got a call from the person that's interested in boys and girls track if possible. Again, we have two boys, it told me two, it shows two ninth graders and two tenth graders on the form for boys track. They have one girl for softball that's interested, I think a ninth grader, don't quote me, and I think one for, one or two for girls track. Now, I don't mean, not aware of any, you know, stars or anything, but they could participate just like ours. So we did have a conversation. I went and saw Mr. Sandberg this morning, you know, just to get, okay, you know, the reason, hey, you'd be against this because, well, you know, there are not too many activities that could take some of the kids. And so, that being said, the size of the school does not put us in a bigger or different section or anything like that. We could still, if there was another district that wanted to co-op for some reason, we can have, I don't know if it's a second. It could be three schools, four schools, so I mean, it really doesn't stop anything. So Mr. Mason was reaching out to softball and girls' track today, and I didn't hear anything. Someone said absolutely against, you know, not in favor. So I guess that's where we're at, to have a conversation. It's not going to add any cost. They would get their kids here, you know, transportation-wise, all that stuff. They will have insurance for their kids, you know, that piece of it, and that's where we're at. I have no reason not to be in favor, no different if it was, I'm just going to be honest, in this little fork, or anyone else now. Could, and the story out there, could there be a star runner that beats one of our kids? And our kid, you know, doesn't get to a state because, I mean, anything can happen, but it can also, could be a member that gets our team over the top to go, you know, so.
No, I think it's awesome.
That's where we're at, but there again, it's not a win-all of kids for any activity at this point. And it could, they had one or two girls interested in debate. We don't have a debate team. We talked about speech, that there's a possibility. So I mean, it could be other options. Now, there, again, each one is separate, so each one will have to come to you if we decide to go forward. And I guess, I don't have much now. Only ones I think that could be harder is if they would want, I'm going to throw a Knowledge Bowl, where you really may have a team of five, and they haven't said. And they haven't said, you know, that might be a little dicier, because, yeah, you know, but on the flip side, speech, you can take kids for speech. You can take kids for one act. You can take kids for any other activity we have, maybe, other than, like you say, but you could help your knowledgeable, or jibway bowl, or, you know, any of those two, so it's hard to...
So my, my only question, 'cause I think it's awesome. I, I've had more and more schools are doing the co-op for sports and activities. I mean, it kinda happened, you know, if you're in a situation where you kinda have to, to be, you know, competitive. My only question was, because this is for girls track, boys track, and softball. If later on, they had a girl that wanted to play hockey, or a boy that wanted to play hockey, do you have to do an addendum to this agreement?
No, they're all individual, so actually, if you look, um, and I have one, here, give you one sec. They're all an individual sheet, and so every sport right here, every sport is separate. You know, and that's why I'm just gonna use, you know, like envelope and routine are combined in some things right now, some things are not. Next year, they'll be rock rich for everything. So technically, you can say yes to these, and you can say no for hockey if you want. I mean, that, that can happen, which, you know. Typically, this is a two-year agreement, okay? So we are, you know, we're there. We have any kids that do it, you know, down the road, you could have two this year and no one next year, if you're still in that cult. Um, but then after two years, it, um, comes back to, you know. So, yeah, everyone is separate. Because of that, I'm not aware, unless, and as it go on, see if there's interest like you said. Now, what rec does is a whole nother conversation, because that has come up too. If, I guess my feeling, and this is my own opinion right now, under the current, if we had an agreement for track, I would think we would let their younger kids, if they're interested, participate in junior high track, but right now, I don't make that decision. You know, I mean, to me, that would make sense. Now, if we don't allow, say, we didn't have a co-op for a sport, typically, we wouldn't let those kids come and play, um, rec unless, I mean, unless there, there's a few examples, I think, like T-ball, where, you know, they don't have T-ball and just use a long fork, so, or area it does, but, um, that was just a conversation. But again, the promise isn't gonna be in that area, because we don't make that written, but they have interest possibly.
Any questions or discussion? Moving for a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried.
Now, let me, um, if I can start some conversation with, um, I'll just, if you can look that. Um, the, the summer arena was just coming in, um, from, I'm gonna say that the, the groups that had done it in the past. Now, someone else could come forward, lead from Maui, you know, or whatever, but, um, looking, and I'm just gonna group them in boys hockey, girls hockey, figure skating, I should say, four groups, and then who rented and did some three-on-three in some camps. And so what, um, has typically happened, and I'm just gonna do a, a small, I don't wanna say history lesson, but it's, it's the way I'm aware of things. Um, it started off years ago just being summer hockey. Um, and again, I could be wrong if we go back thirty, forty years or whatever, but for the most part, it was summer hockey. Figure skating became, um, more involved and wanted some time. Girls hockey became, you know, um, more active, wanted some time. So, the school has endorsed those, and for the most part, um, done very inexpensive. Um, nine hundred dollars, as long as I can spend nine hundred dollars a week, okay? Um, and for the most part, um, boys hockey got two weeks, girls hockey, um, tagged on in there somewhere for the most part, and figure skating got two weeks. So we operated for a month and then shut things down. Now, things had grown a little bit. And so now, in essence, I'm just being honest, that, um, we look at it and recharge one group going rate for the most part last year, and now you have some that, you know, recharge a nine hundred dollars. And so, again, I, out of curiosity, um, did the league wire in, are we in a good spot or a bad spot with that? And for the most part, was told, you better get something in writing, why it's one way or another, or treat everyone similarly. And so for the most part, um, I'm here to ask and make sure we're on board, that we look at covering our costs, okay? And that's, I guess, which would be more than nine hundred bucks. I mean, I'm gonna be honest with you, um, and I have a sheet here, um, you know, if someone wants to look at it, we can. But for the most part, it's about six hundred and fifty dollars a day. Well, just, just listen, for five days, so about three thousand dollars a week. And that would cover the week, and assuming we don't run a week, 'cause I had to, for instance, I took the twenty-nine, or thirty, or thirty-one days, took that bill and divided it, well, most part, we didn't operate on a weekend, where you still have to cover those costs, otherwise, right, it is. So that's why I said it went from four hundred and fifty-seven or something like that. Um, and again, uh, and, and I think it's, I'll be honest with you, I think it's very brutal when we spread it out. I just think it's gonna possibly look, sorry, wait, here's what, what I have. Um, I think we may, I haven't talked to the other groups, you know, I'll, I've just, you know, said we would talk about it, and I think the board will be in support of, you know, money, but, um, we may want to run, I'm just gonna say, move the rents more of the time, and maybe have boys hockey paired together. And again, they're not paid for going rate. Um, but I think it's very, you know, we want, personally, I want it used, but on the other hand, um, I don't wanna get into a situation where, you know, again, it was fine for a while, but now, um, it's, it's, and it's good, it's one, you know, one more use, but it's also created an issue of, you know, one person rented for pretty much nothing, um, or a couple of rooms, and, you know, not have to charge much, and then another group rented and have to charge significantly. And so, I guess I wanna meet with the three. All I'm asking is if we're on board, I'm gonna develop something for the most part to cover our costs. Unless you directly, you know, that's why I left it open, unless, you know, they cover fifty percent or something. I mean, if you want, I mean, we can do that, but we're gonna treat everyone the same, um, for the most part, like I was gonna say. Comes up to six hundred and sixty-five dollars roughly a, a day for five days to be covered. Now, think about it, though, I mean, this is the problem is, if we charge them, say, three thousand five hundred. It's very doable if you have enough kids to not have to charge a ton. Now, again, if you have to, you know, it depends on what you're trying to do, especially if we can run an twelve-hour, you know, whatever you can, that we can get it under, I think it's really doable, still fairly economical. You know, now, if you want to make money and try covering, that's a totally different situation, you know. But, um, like I said, a month is eleven grand for power, other month is twelve grand, other month eight, you know, eight grand. I mean, it's, it's being used, but that, it's more expensive to run that in summer, of course, it is in the winter, just to be honest. You know, and that's just the electric, we have gas, we have, you know, and so on. So, I think it's very doable. I'm just asking, are you on board to, let's be consistent, um, for the most part, I don't have the employee cost in it, I'm just being honest, because for the most part, we have employees working, but we also have a lot more than we can, and, you know, it's not...
It's part of their day.
Oh, it is, but it's, it's a piece that we can have, something that's good for, good junk for kids, I'm not against having, you know, a little, um, skating game, if that's what, but I don't think taxpayers should go for thirty. You know, even if, we do let be a good junk, but I still don't think...
So I have a question.
Yep.
When you say that you wanna, um, even it, like you're saying that hockey would pay the same price as figure skating and girls hockey?
What we will come up with now, you know, see if we can get, like, I say, a ten-hour day for us, just, I'm just gonna use ten hours. If that was the case, if I just divided the six sixty-five, whatever, call it seven hundred, buy ten hour, each group would pay seventy bucks an hour. And then, you know, you figure out, like you say, maybe we sp- and I'm just using figure skating. Maybe we spread them out over a month instead of them having it solely for the two weeks. You know, and that might allow them, now again, it is more expensive, no doubt about it. You know, but is there something they can do where they can have three, four kids skating, you know, at a time? You know, where before, I'm sure they had some individual stuff, 'cause, like I say, um, it's very, and again, this is to change in time. You know, and different groups are interested, and it's gonna be more, um, and so, I hope to have a conversation, see if it'll work. Maybe they, now, I'm guessing if it runs again for, for the most part, two months, maybe figure skating has some stuff going for two months. And, you know, and so it, it could be a plus, it's just gonna, it is...
And I think they always typically should with girls hockey.
Sometimes they have, it just depends...
I was gonna say, I know girls hockey doesn't go on their own thing, but sublet the time for...
But I think we still had to figure skating at ninety dollars.
Well, no, the, it got split between, because, I've worked on it, it, you know, well, for the most part, I think it got modified, then it faded. Girls hockey was actually the boys hockey last year. Like, you know, they went, had a chat, at, it was starting at three, Erin added from, I don't remember, it was eight or nine, till two, and then there was a break for an hour.
Yes, because they...
Yeah. And so, um, in that case, they split that time, right? We didn't charge them each nine, and then we, and paid whatever value the rate was, and we did. So again, I wanna make it work, I want all the groups to still be able to have what they can have, and it's just gonna be different. I'm sure someone might not be a hundred percent happy about things, but the reality is, I'm just gonna say, if this came here tomorrow, it's a day, I want to run the camp, I want the nine hundred dollars, a week deal, you know, unless we have, and I mean, unless you say, okay, it has to be a hundred percent our kids, they need criteria A, B, and C and that, but even those camps, you know, the boys hockey is not just our kids, you know, and it never has been. And, you know, it's been, go from wherever, a lot of grandparents had kids, which is great, for the taxpayer, but the same with figure skating. There's people from across, across the border, and, and, you know, different things, and so, um, this is where we need to go, really, now, so we don't get ourselves... But like I say, unless you want to subsidize it to a certain extent, you're tightly, you're not gonna say we're communiting, but then cover the subsidies with the, with the employee cost and, and some other things.
I think it's all in my frame, it too. I mean, if you go, if you say, okay, we used to charge a hundred dollars a week, now we charge three thousand dollars, people are gonna freak out.
Yeah.
Well, we're gonna be upfront, I mean...
But I mean, if you break it down by the day, or the hour, that's... It sounds better, and then that way, if one group, like, say, boys hockey wanted it for three weeks, and then Erin wanted to run her camp for two of those weeks, she could go in with boys hockey, you know, however it worked.
Yeah, and, and we're gonna have to be a little, you know, flexible and see, and not, you know, exactly get the perfect time, you know, but we'll flexibly, you know, rotate, or do some things just like we do now, so that hopefully we can accommodate as much as, as many as possible, and, um, you know, go from there. Because again, if the use, usage last year was a good thing for the program, it was, it was a few hiccups here and there, but, um, we need to be consistent. And so, I guess, I don't think, I don't need, I don't need motion or anything from you, as long as we're on page, you know. If someone was gonna say, no, I want it at nine hundred bucks for everyone, then I would ask it, but then, you know, it's proven. Otherwise, the, the three or four contracts will come to you probably next month, you know, for formal approval. Um, like I say, we all are consistent, and we'll try and have a, a round at that time. And if they don't like it, obviously, they become lobby, if you wanna say it that way.
I have one more question. So how do you distinguish, like, last year, there, there was three-on-three, but within that three-on-three, after that was done, they had select groups that went...
What happens is when a group rents, and this is where a little bit of the rub happened, you know, if you come and rent that arena for an hour, four, whatever, we have a tough time, as long as it's quote-unquote a legal activity, I mean, to say, no. And, and again, we had, I'm just gonna be upfront, we had some conversation, things that just didn't sit right. We'll see if anything changes, not that it's dictating or anything, but, you know, um, the board has a right to not run anything over there. Also, this is where we're tearing our equipment, you know. So hopefully, it's just, I'm gonna say, a little bit of the exclusion. Now, if someone couldn't afford it, you can't force that. You know what I'm saying? That's a different story, but it was more of the, you might fifteen out of twenty or something like that, that just didn't sit very well with the board. And so, we had, I had a conversation, and so, we can't have this thing. You know, front of what I'm hearing, because I wanted to go again this year, I want that place to be used. So, but the reality, to answer the question, if you wanna rent it for an hour at that rate, and you wanna let three kids come skate and not no one else, you're a call for it. Well, I'm just being honest.
Yeah, you're being honest.
You know, or invite the, the line your son or daughter was on, or the, you know, three figure skaters in a group and no one else technically could, but, um, I hope that doesn't happen. Like I say, not that everyone has to participate in these...
Well, it's always been about participation and affordability for the families and the kids, you know, and so, um, but again, we, and it should still be that way, but taxpayers should be on hold for the use of the facility.
And they have for many years, but again, it's grown now, it's not just a one-month deal.
Well, it's always been a numbers game, so, I mean, every year, it's a numbers game, and that's why it's, that's why the, the boys, the boys side went to two weeks back in their late sixties, early seventies. It was a four-week camp. But what would happen is, is that families would only choose one week. And so then it was pick to choose, well, over the course of four weeks, your numbers are down. You know, so they went to two weeks, and now you gotta, and they gotta choose, you know. And a lot of, like, people, like kids, a lot of families went to both, both two weeks, you know, but, um, but it went that way. There was talks over many of the summers where, I don't know if we're gonna have a camp this year. We don't have the participation, we don't have the, you know, we don't have the sign up, so we...
And I guess, I, I have not shopped around, but I still think, I'm just gonna throw it out there, seventy dollars per hour of ice time, I think is...
It's really cheap.
Well, I know, and that's not, that I hope, you know, all these groups can keep up, whether it's, you know, figure skating, whatever, whatever. I mean, I'm sure it's two to three hundred dollars now, or typically. So again, I think, again, some may rumble a little bit, but we should definitely be able to work it out, and hopefully meet the demand, and, and maybe it'll even grow. Now, that being said, I have had some conversation with Mr. Holt, 'cause I want him to talk with his group, because I'm interested in possibly having a third or fourth employee, even rotation, because I'll be honest with you, most of the arena people didn't sign up, and I'm just being honest, Holt worked all summer, you know, um, in the arena. You know, the, the nights and late, especially the weekends, which we did very minimal last year, and I still find it that way. But yet, you know, I think a, a piece of work, we can rotate another person or two in there, so that, because what happens is, they don't get, everyone else gets a two-to, two-to, um, this one, I don't know, or six-to-two, or six-to-four, and you do four ten-hour days. Yeah, you know, and not have to work till ten at night, you know, which a lot of them do every other week or in the arena, you know, not have to work. So it's just not as desirable necessarily, let's be honest. A lot of us want to be on like, you know, in the evenings or whatever. So we're gonna try and see if we can accommodate a little more. We did get it where they could work four-ten's, the, the two people that were there, and we did accommodate a couple times when we made a conflict. So, it's gonna work, um, I'll move forward, I'll bring the contracts next month. Unless anyone else has any questions on that.
Questions, discussion, or...
And the last, the last one that's on here before reports again, um, we kept it on here, the, the school resource officer. I don't have a whole lot new for anyone other than, um, you know, in talking with Mr. Kraschik, that, you know, we need to be there, or be interested in, in, you know, being a partner to a certain extent or not. And again, I don't have much to go on, other than that, we went, let's say, a hundred years, for the most part, without having an SRO. I mean, now, do I think it's a good thing, do the group clap here, but there is a cost to it, you know? And I can't tell you that if we finance this, something's gonna give somewhere down the road. And I'm gonna say it's a social studies teacher, I'm not gonna say it's a third grade, I, it's just, it's a cost. It's, you know, and so, again, if we're not interested, we have to be upfront. If it's something, we would say, teach, we're dealing with, you know, they're willing to work with us, you know, and what that might look at, like, wouldn't be there, but, um...
Yeah, I, I struggle with the salary, it's not our boy, um, the timing, I don't like the timing. And I still think that there can be some more discussion on how to utilize that, person, that officer, whereby the city can utilize them more. Uh, and we can still utilize them as we need.
So do you want me to pursue, and I'm just throwing it out there, like a thirty, thirty-five thousand dollar, if we could have, you know, a halftime, you know, they've not been here every year. I mean, they're open to conversation, but they need to know what we're willing to... I mean, they're open to conversation, but they need to know what we're willing to, you know, look for, you know, and if we're looking at them and paying the hundred percent, I think they're gonna say they can't afford it. I'm just gonna be honest. Now, it doesn't mean we won't, still maybe get someone for a little bit of time, because Mike is a believer that this is good. And I, I can't disagree, but I can't force them, you know, to pay.
What exactly does the school resource officer do here? Because I got the impression at that meeting that we were having, we were talking about it, Mike was here. Is he doing some sort of disciplinary?
Well, he will help if there's certain things, you know, depending on what the situation is. I mean, I guess, I'm gonna be honest, he works with some kids, GM relationships, there's some mental health stuff. You know, if it's kids they work with, he has other things going on, he will work with them. I mean, he's not doing, you know, our discipline work for the most part. I mean, he's, you know, he's doing, let's say, SRO-type activities. And again, it's relationship, though, it's, you know, it's doing stuff with kids, it's, you know, making it surround your own school, you know, knowing, you know, that he's here and this and that. They started sending him to some training, SRO training, I don't know what that exactly entails. He's worked with us on some of our safety stuff, but again, law enforcement has always, you know, known with us.
Well, it's just to say they have obligation as the city.
Correct, but, but that being said, you know, he's moving, he's here, he's done a little bit at the elementary, not a lot. You two went over, what grade?
We went over and did prevention, we did present presentations to fourth and fifth grade, and he came over with us. He spent a lot of time in our cave room, he was very busy at lunchtime there. And he would come in and interact with the kids there, do rounds at the school, he would go up and take a round. I know I had a concern about a couple students that were in the bathroom, just went and had a conversation with them. That's what I saw, that was what I, so he helped with, we did a presentation, prevention with the fourth and fifth graders, and one of the things that, our purpose was to go into those grades to see what their level was. And so he helped us, the three of us, Janessa Blaski and I, came up with a plan on how to go forward with the fourth and tenth graders. So he helped us with that.
One of the things that I think will, this kind of goes to what Bruce was saying, too. I think there's a lot of intentional things that can be done in that sort of position. I've had some experiences where they've done things like some more startup justice programming, some different things like that. And I guess I'd be interested to see if you can find some of those really intentional targeted things like that. There are grants sometimes that have been launched with that, to really help that.
Well, and I told Joanne, had that grant she had, it was outdated.
Yeah.
Okay, I mean, it was several years old, I did a search, I did not find anything specific, you know, exactly that fit the criteria. And I'm gonna say something doesn't come out, who knows what comes out three months from now legislative? There's all kinds of one-time money. There will be some stuff for, you know, safety, but again, the long-term piece is, and I'm just gonna be honest, I don't wanna do this for a six-month deal, you know what I'm saying? If we're gonna commit, again, we can't lock, can't force you, like, either we're on board and we're gonna do this for a while, or we, we're not, you know, and that's just fine, too, you know, it's like I say, we did not ask, this is something Mike asked, if he could, if he wants, he can show that it's, you know, it's worthwhile, and, and again, I'm not, it is, but it's out of the cost.
But then, if it's being, not pushed, but if it's being put forth by the, by the city police, then why aren't they looking for grants to fund it? Why are they asking the school to fund the position?
I don't think you're gonna find an ongoing, an ongoing grant that's gonna pay for an SRO, you know, year in and year out. Yeah, I mean, it's just, there, there might be something that, you know, to get something off the ground, and again, identifying if that's what that grant was, but it was several years old, was to get it going, but then, it's, you're on the clock.
I would just think it would be part of the preventive plan of the city to provide a resource. And I, I wouldn't think that he'd need to be here full-time, but if he wanted, you know, if they wanted him to come in and do programs like what you were talking about, Beth, you could call. But I remember when I was in school, the police would come in every once in a while and do certain programs, so it's kind of the same thing, and we didn't pay for that.
Well, certain things, and to be honest, you've paid ten grand, when I say, longer than I've been here. And I'm not saying every county or every school or every district does that. Obviously, anytime we call, they come. You know, it has nothing to do whether we're paying or not, but my take, that ten grand has been for DARE, been for, you know, I'm gonna say, fire department, you know, doing some things, it's just, it's been in our budget forever. You know, and I'm not saying it has to, in fact, it might have been more at one time than.
It was more at one time, yeah.
Yeah, it might have been twenty grand, and we cut it in half, you know, fifteen years ago or something. You know, and again, it was just for city services, and again, complain, I mean, they helped us commence a lot of things, even some stuff that, you know, you could say, if you just go out back here for us, you can get touched, you know, I mean, give, see what you're just saying. So, they will continue to help, it's just, my gut is they're not gonna have someone here like you right now, and it's okay.
And have we seen a huge difference or uptick in, or maybe downtick in disciplinary action? Or, I mean, anything that's trackable, that we could say he's made this difference?
I, I would say it's too short, and even, like you said before, even if you look at discipline referrals over the year, I mean, it could be attributed to a lot of things, and that's gonna be the tough part, you know, unless you do a specific, there's an initiative, and he's running, you know, and even the DARE program, we have enough of the show, you know, how many years that that, did that help, and we gotta hope, you know, it did something. And then a muffle, just like that, you know, the cave group or different things going on, it can't hurt, that's my theory. So that's what we keep doing, but I can't say it's completely.
I just guess I feel like the response time, if something did happen, even if he was here, or if he was at the elementary school, and something happened at the high school, the response time from the police department, if he called 911, probably wouldn't be much difference from him getting here from the elementary school.
Not at all, I mean, I know the response time, like you say, about putting him in, only when we had a director who was intense, but again, that, I can't guarantee that, you know, because he has a different response, so.
If you Google the average school resources, like, officer salary, it's forty-five thousand five hundred and seventy-four in Minnesota. So I guess I was just curious as to why it is sixty-two thousand.
I guess the way they're looking at it is they took a, I have, we have a contract on somewhere in the documents, is they took having him full-time, you know, for the hundred and eighty-eight day, you know, school, or a hundred and seventy-four school days, the, you know, and then they were taking on the, let me say, other three months, you know, and again, that's salary.
Twenty thousand.
Well, no, but that's salary benefits, I don't know if you're getting that whole thing. The complete package for an officer, don't quote me, but it was right around ninety thousand. Okay, so, we're on the board, you know, salary and benefits for roughly three quarters of it, and, you know, and then they're on for the other, you know, and if we were interested in different pieces, they're willing to talk and see what they can do. But, like I say, maybe we could get something at halftime or third time or whatever, if we're interested, and then it's a matter of if they can afford and have the person doing other stuff, or maybe in another quarter here, but then another half, you know, whatever.
Or maybe we more clearly define the ten thousand that we're already paying.
Well, and that's the piece we already talked about, if we were gonna pay the sixty-two thousands, probably fifty-two thousand, because I'm gonna come back ten thousand.
I just don't know what they would do all day, every day. Like, I feel like if you had the more intentional pieces of it, like, okay, they're gonna come in for this time and do this, I think that's a little more, more, like, realistic for us.
And that's what our ten thousand should cover, yeah.
Well, the ten thousand, I mean, you start putting in an hourly, I mean, you can get something, but I don't think they're gonna have a specific SRO necessarily, they'll just be an officer.
Okay with that.
Well, we can have that conversation, and like I say, we've had, like, Danes came in years prior and dealt with a lot of the juvenile stuff, tobacco violations, there's a piece that they come in and have to deal with, you know, and so they come in and do it here, and these other things that they help with. You know, so I'm not gonna say we haven't got anything. It's just, you know, the DARE program, when we had it, they came in, done it, and were willing to. Right now, they don't have a DARE office, they don't have anyone, you know, this person would have taken on that role.
So is there anybody else that comes in? Like, I remember when I was a kid seeing Ken Etney here, who was like the juvenile officer? Or is it just that role?
Well, I guess that, we've had a person, like, and really, it was Dane Olson, for example. He was what they would consider the juvenile officer, he would come in whenever he was on shift. You know, so for the most part, they were four on and four off, I think, and two of those days are during the days. So he would usually be in for a little bit and deal with anything that we had in his mailbox. You know, now, the rest of the time, if we needed anyone, we'd call, and they respond, just like they would, you know, but again, the DARE program, that was either him and was scheduled, in fact, that's been involved, or if there's anything else, we schedule them and, you know, work around, and that can work. It's just you're not gonna have, you know, immediately presence necessarily, or, so. Again, I'm not, I'm not pushing, I mean, you don't have to, and again, you can come back. They just need to deserve, you know, or, you know, can't listen at this point.
Of course.
You know, and like I say, you can't come back to it, you didn't hear a year ago, having some conversation, interesting.
So do you need to go back to the city at this point and say what we're willing or not willing to do?
Well, if we're gonna do something, that's what we have to go, if we're not gonna do anything, I just gotta be upfront, have the conversation, that we can't do anything right now, we can possibly look at it down the road, and that option's always open.
I can't justify sixty-two thousand dollars.
So, certainly that piece, is there even emotion to bring this to the table or not at this time? All right. So move on to committee reports. Our student members at the conference, would you like to give us something?
All right, so, Student Council, we rang the bell for the Salvation Army at County Market. I already gave you that update, but we did raise a hundred and eighty-seven dollars. Cave Coalition and students participated in muffin Monday, that happened in December there. We greeted students at the door and welcomed them into school and gave them a muffin for breakfast. Student Council held Christmas dress-up days just for holiday spirit. We had ugly sweater contests, too, we had four winners. We have Christmas bingo with four classes winning prizes. And then coming up, we have our Winter Sports Week, that is next week, the twenty-third through the twenty-seventh, with our Pet Fest on January twenty-fifth during sixth and seventh hour. And then Student Council will be selling Valentine's flowers the week of the twenty-third through twenty-seventh at Ticket Booth during A, B, and C lunch. And those will be delivered on Valentine's Day, and staff and students can order them. MHS, we're gonna have a little kid dance in February, so I'm assuming that's like fourth, fifth, and sixth grade. The grades have, I don't know the grades yet, but that's probably right around that age. And then MHS takes care of the royalty for the Pet Fest, the winner's sports king and queen, just the seniors there. And then we have our monthly meeting tomorrow for MHS. Any questions?
Okay, we are at four hundred and sixty-two students this month, we were at four sixty-one last month, so we're up one student. We, last month, we, you know that we PCA sponsored the cost of a movie and snacks for all of our students preschool through grade five, so we thank them for that, that was really nice of them to cover that cost. We are in the middle of our second winter screening for our next round of data meetings for our literacy initiative. We have winter conferences coming up in February, we'll have preschool registration coming up in February. And on our workshop day, we had staff provide training on units three of our letters, and then preschool staff finished out some students' screening, preschool screening. Any questions for me?
For community ed this month, we had snowball safety, defensive driving, we had defensive driving today, we had over ninety participants. It was extremely busy, I had to bring additional staff over to help with that. We have, our instructor comes from Duluth, he's a state trooper, and Rain River, right, I guess, the college, allows us to use our theater over there, and which works out perfectly. We've had water aerobics, we will also be having an article in the paper about water aerobics, and Marge Vida reached out today, showed us an article about the benefits, and just overall, an article about that. So that was, I was very excited to hear that. Monday, eight littles were screened for preschool, and our PALS program. In the last month or so, they went to bowling, they exercised, they had people on view. We have karate coming up on Thursday. We have some Valentine craft nights coming up, PALS continues to be extremely busy. Anything that is, like, our volume is about ten, we usually have, but anything other than just our normal, like, in a volume, like, for bowling, I had to bring five staff, and that's additional to the staff that they bring, because PALS has just become, it's exploded, it really, really has. And we are gonna have to start talking about maybe having an additional person to do transportation. So Angela Schuler, again, I cannot say enough about how she's just taken on that program, and really learning, and talking to the staff at the houses and guardians and the participants, listening to them what they want. So, that's going great. We also have a town hall meeting, I think all of you may have gotten an invite.
They just have to cut it to a point.
Okay, that will be October eighth, Representative Baker will be there, he'll be the keynote speaker. We have other, February.
February.
October. So January, February eighth, at Bacchus, and again, Representative Baker will be the keynote speaker, and we'll have other entities from the community. The purpose of this event is to spread awareness about ATOB, which is alcohol, tobacco, and other drugs, and opioids. But overall, the theme of the town hall meeting is for the community to come and ask questions of experts in our community. We will be having Baker, and we will have someone from probation, we will have someone from the treatment side, we'll have someone from prevention. So, we'll have professionals there that, community members, parents, guardians, grandparents, aunts, uncles, can come and ask questions and get correct information. And we just wanna spread, you know, like, my piece of it will be what we can do in our community, activities that we can do, healthy things, how parents and adults and kids alike can talk to their kids about what they see, or what they may be wondering about. Kate will be the last speaker of that town hall meeting, so we'll wrap it up with a positive note. And so, that is coming up. Also, at the end of January, Janessa Blaski and I will be flying out to Washington DC. We have been asked to participate, we had to submit a plan, I guess is kind of the best. It's about our prevention efforts that we've been doing in our, with our kids at the school. So we've been asked to come, and it's kind of like a graduation. But the biggest piece is we're gonna be meeting with some of our legislators, legislation, legislative people from Minnesota, where we can sit down and talk about local issues in international falls in our community. So we're really excited about that. And her and I will attend a training on Thursday or Zoom about kind of how we submit our questions, how we do our conversations, exactly the flow of it, so we'll be out there, and hopefully do some positive things.
Couple things, first of all, there's money in that grant, I just want to throw it out. It's not, it's not general fund money, sending them to DC. Oh, I'm just, it's, oh. The second thing I was gonna mention is I need you all to copy. Keep in mind, if we could all show up, you know, seven board members, at something like this, just don't all sit together. You know, not say two of you can't sit together, or something, you know, that's not anything, because occasionally, that sometimes comes up. There's questions, what do you say, send it to myself and three board members, well, that's okay, I don't count, okay, you know? But, so I just throw that out there, so. I have Tim's, Tim couldn't be with us tonight. Um, I have Tim's, uh, Tim couldn't be with us tonight. Um, uh, enrollment here, uh, current enrollment is 510. Um, enrollment from last, last month was at 515, so around five. Just to be honest, it looks like we gained a sixth grader, um, stayed same seventh loss, an eighth grader, lost a ninth grader, lost a 11th grader, and lost three seniors. I can't tell you, well, I'm just, that's what's, now could some of these kids have went to the ALC? It's possible. Tim would have to answer, um, and they, they do track as much as they can, so anyway, that's.
Couldn't they still be in the council if they're at the ALC?
They don't come, I don't think he has the, in this because technically they come under, they are our kids, we're getting fun, but it comes under, I think, the, uh, ALC, which is part of, um, North of Marne Center.
Oh, it's like a separate fowl.
Correct, again, they're not, um, I think, but Tim can clarify that.
So should we have a monthly, like, ALC count as well?
We could surely give you, I mean, the number of kids over there, um, and, uh. Winter sports week is next week, January 23rd through the 27th. Uh, end of second quarter, uh, semester one is Monday, January 23rd. Semester two starts on Tuesday, January 24th. And can't answer a whole lot, ask questions. I can give answers if you do. Um, on my stuff, uh, we're getting to that time, I, I copied some things. Governor's budget came out today. Um, I made a copy for your reading. Again, there's a lot of stuff, obvious state education that I think is good. This is kind of throwing stuff against the wall and we'll see what sticks. There's some stuff, again, I haven't spent enough time really reading and no one will be more amazed to come. There's some stuff that the last page or two, uh, that could help our Jibway, um, program. Um, but who knows where things are going to end, to be honest with you. Um, but I just, for your reading, I copied that if you're interested. Um, uh, I gave you a copy of the committee sheet. I said I would do that last week. Um, if anyone sees any errors, by all means, let me know. Um, under administrative committee, um, you have a superintendent contract to, um, negotiate. And I guess I would ask that we come back. Tony was part of the committee before and we just never got to complete it. So, the Tony Bruce, I, I don't remember who's.
It's me, Tony, keep an eye on it.
Oh, hey, Tony, do you want? Okay, sorry. Someone want to throw out a time and a date or want to need to send an email with, uh, I, I mean, what's the easiest? Obviously, Joy and is not here.
I don't have my calendar with me either, so.
Okay, well, why don't I send a, an email tomorrow and those dates and see if we did something with a goal of hopefully having something in February? And the, and the last thing I have is typically as we get into February and beginning of March, we have a couple of work sessions as far as budget work sessions, we'll get enrollment. Um, and so I would like to send those if we could. Um, and then, and again, finding a date at all seven, you know, just becomes tough. I'm just going to be honest. And so I guess I can throw in a couple out, um, assuming we do on Mondays. If we don't, we can look at different dates. I would say like a February 13th and then go like March 13th. Again, we, um, I'm open to whatever. It's just if we don't get things, and I know Bruce, you're gone at some point, I don't remember when. Um, and again, you know, just, I don't know if people have, know that will work or this will work or, or if we want to look at different days or whatever. I just, we need to get something on the calendar. Usually they, anyway, a couple hours of guessing. Um, and again, we're going to set a budget, not knowing what the governor's going to do or what legislature does, it's the way it works. But, um, thoughts on those dates, different dates, try and get something.
Are we just going to keep it at 515 like our normal?
That was my thought unless someone has different.
Sounds good to me.
February 13th definitely can, I'm not sure what March 13th is.
And again, we can meet, we can, you know, get somewhat recorded from, you know, or whatever, you know, and you pack it like this. Let, let's send those and let's just go with it. And then if, I mean, if all seven, four or five people can't make it, that's a different story. And yeah, but keep it.
I'm leaving next week.
Okay. Not perfect, but enjoy.
Oh, it's perfect.
That is all I have unless someone has any questions.
Will we move on to committee reports? Anything from the committee education advisory board? Recreation commission.
Go ahead.
Joy, I, just so the groups are aware, um, we met with the teachers union last week, I don't remember what day, on to have a conversation about the options. And, I mean, that's kind of where we left, we're looking, um, to, to get a response, I guess, from them on, on, you know, what, I guess I'm going to say what they feel is their unit's work. And, and, and then it'll come, like I say, back to this group to decide what we want to do, um, and what, um, the city's going to want to do and, and also I guess the rec commission itself. We haven't got to that point, but, um, it was, I'm going to say a good meeting unless, um, they want to come in differently. You know, just trying to figure out, and there will be options if, no matter what happens. So I don't know from the rec committee or the, uh, actual rec committee, was, is the one that's going to come?
They will.
Tomorrow, okay, so. Yeah, is that a fair statement, Bruce?
Yeah, yep, yep. And getting out the word out to, you know, we'd like to know ahead of time if they have some concerns or ideas. Because of that, that needs to be decided on because the things are going to replace Phil. There needs to be some shadow for that, and higher reading stuff, so.
Person or possibly people.
Or it could be two, yeah, yeah, could be two people.
Again, if it's our decision or if it's someone else, that's a different.
Yes, right.
With that, is there a motion to adjourn?
Okay, I'm sorry. That's a good question. I don't know where is the appropriate place to bring up things, but I had a couple of people approach about the, um, raffle that was done by hockey, the gun raffle. And I, I'm just going to put it out there, I am not close, but I have had people, a couple of people express concerns. I explained to them that that was done through rec hockey and we're not.
And it's actually, and I, I can't speak whether it's rec hockey or whether it's booster group. You know, unfortunately, we don't have much control.
Yeah, I know our Bronco Boys team did sell tickets for it.
Those are in the world.
Yep, but they, and they participated like in the drawing and everything and the cheerleaders did. But I know it was driven by rec hockey. So I explained that to the person and I said, you know, we do have communication, obviously I can catch your concerns along, but I just wanted to let you guys know in case anybody says anything.
Miss, do you know any more about?
We didn't do anything about hockey.
I don't think that is rec hockey. I think that actually is Bronco Boys hockey.
But what I was, but what I was going to say is, again, if, if boosters as a separate, assuming they're a 501(c)(3), there's, as long as it's a, you know, if it's not legal, anyone has a right to.
Yeah, it wasn't about legal versus not legal. It was more about with school shootings and all that kind of stuff. And I was like.
No, I, I don't, I don't know what to, you know, other than, I mean, you know, one of us could have a conversation with, you know, a booster club, but I mean, you don't have control.
That's, and that's basically what I'm saying. I mean, I pass your concerns along, I'll let the other board member know that there are people that had concerns about it, but I don't expect anything. I just want to go with you.
And I guess, I'm just going to throw a few things out. If there ever was something that really did not sit. And again, I'm just going to say whether gun raffle is right or whether personally no, you know, it's a game and technically. Yeah, well, I'm just saying, you know, there's some people that that's not going to sit. Well, if there ever is something, there's not to say we can't have a conversation, you know, and hey, this doesn't, I mean, there's ways for us to put pressure. But I guess I'm not going to say, you know, mine or something like that. I don't make the noises, you know, we're in an area.
I agree.
So I'm just throwing it out there.
Yep, I, I don't want you to think that I don't, I don't agree with you.
Now, I'm going to say I probably would not.
It was hockey boosters, it wasn't.
It was hockey boosters, okay.
Now, that being said, I'm probably not going to let our fifth grade, you know, do a raffle for a party. You know, even if it was, you know, I'm just being honest, no, we'll do a raffle or something else or do some pizzas or whatever.
Yeah, the reason I was thinking rec hockey though is because I think booster, it was through the boosters, but they did something where they used, because they have to have a gambling license for that. And it was something, it was feedback, that's, um, rec, I, I don't know.
They found the Jacks.
Yeah, Jacks, yes, yes.
And the trap club, just to be honest, again, which is technically under us, you know, has done, I think they're not, it's not us doing it, but they also have to pass. You know, and so again, everyone has a right. I understand we're not endorsing that one, it's hurting anybody.
Yeah, and that's basically what I'm saying. There's one more, you know?
Thank you all. Six to five.
I'll, I'll move to you.
All second. Paul and Peter.
Hi.